Absolutely. We started recognizing difference makers as our vision to be the premier school district in the state of Missouri, and we are so excited about that, and that will happen through difference makers that work for us and stakeholders, community-wise, as we're all working together. So tonight, I believe Lori Ross will be introducing our first difference maker under our learning core value, and so I'll turn it over to you, and we'll go from there.
Well, good evening. Last month, Callaway Hills Elementary was recognized as being one of America's healthiest schools. You might have saw that on the news. Additional highlights for this first year with Kelsey Christman's healthy school coordinator work, we have had the Callaway Hills Cooking Club, we've had the Garden and Fitness Club, all of which were getting lots of calls from around the state wanting to know about the program and how they could get it started in their schools. We have four schools that have been part of the Healthy Snack of the Month Club, which is Callaway, East, Thorpe, and South. They have also participated in the Receipt Return Program, the MU Extension Nutrition Class, March Madness Staff Challenge, and a themed Fitness Week at all of those buildings. And so, one of the big things that Kelsey helped get started this year was the walking school bus at Thorpe Gordon, and so we are really proud of all the work that Kelsey has accomplished this year, and we're looking forward to next year. And so, I don't know that some of the others aren't here tonight that we'd like to recognize with Kelsey Christman, but Justin Reynolds, Callaway Hills, Sarah Thompson, South Elementary, Sarah Wilkinson at Thorpe Gordon, and Rob Clark at East Elementary. So we want to say congratulations for all the great work you do.
On behalf of the board myself, I want to tell you thank you for being a difference maker.
Thank you.
Picture. Okay, next, I believe Sarah Wilding will be introducing our next difference maker under our partnership value.
And it is my pleasure to be here to introduce Steve Brenneman tonight. The goal and the mission of J.C. Rotary Rust is to give back to the community in which they live, and Steve is here to share some experiences and some things he's done through their volunteering program at Southwest Early Childhood Center. He and the Rotarians come and read on a weekly basis in our library to our students and really help promote that love for learning, that eagerness to read out of a book. Steve and I were talking when I came in tonight about how that's where it starts. That's where we're going to start our kids on the road to reading at or above grade level by inspiring that love for literature. And Steve and the Rotarians come, they share their time, they provide themselves as role models, and they share literacy with our youngest scholars in Jeff City Public Schools. So Steve and the Rotarians are difference makers, not only for Southwest Early Childhood Center, but for the district as a whole, as we partner together to help build the skills for these children to accomplish what they need to in their school career and beyond. So we thank Steve and all he does. We have a huge goal to help kids read a thousand books before they get to kindergarten, and we're getting there, aren't we?
We're getting there. Thank you, too.
Karen would probably also like to mention, and Steve is president of the Foundation Board, so he's busy for a lot of reasons, so helping us not just with Rotary, but a lot of time as the president of the Foundation Board.
There's no one in your contacts matching Rotary Club.
We have a job at Southwest Early Childhood Center from the Rotary Club, and so we do Saturday, and we pay for a lot of things over there that they can't afford, you know, that they need, but you know, we all understand the limitations, so agree to a lot, and thanks people like Ryan, Dr. Winston Rutledge, and Alan Mudd, and I'm one on all the men and women who've been reading there. I didn't get a chance to read it four times this year. You know, the first year I read it nearly every week, but now fortunately we're behind it. So we appreciate the partnership by Callaway Hills because I think it's what it's all about.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I think that's all. Everyone is making a difference by being here, but those are all that we're recognizing tonight.
Okay, next item, consent agenda items. Look for approval of that with the addition of the revised personnel reports that you should have at your seats. Thank you, Lindsey. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, nay. Very good. The consent agenda items are adopted. Now, under Reports and Communications, Superintendent update. Back to you, Dr. Whitson.
Absolutely, and I would first, I didn't tell her I was going to do this, Ryan Burns. I'd like to introduce our Director of Communications that will start July 1, who's with us tonight, so if you would stand, we've just recognized you, so we're excited to have you start with us here July 1, and welcome here this evening.
Excited to be here.
Okay, there we go. Here we go. I also wanted to just kind of touch on a couple things. They've referenced, Sarah had referenced earlier about the reading with our number one goal, that 100% of our students are reading at or above grade level. We're excited about that. We have some training here on the 29th of May, some ABLE training. We currently with our middle schools, we have volunteers in the community, and they do an outstanding job. We've had around 30 volunteers, and our goal is to get 150 by this next year, so we're excited about that. We had some training with our central office folks, some other stakeholders, Philip, some other folks in the community, and as we recognize that it's not that hard, that we can all do that, that we can all make a difference in a child's life. At the end of the day, it just comes down to time, and they gave us some guidelines to do that. So we wanted to experience that ourselves, and so that was on the 29th of May here. Summer School enrollment, our summer school. Dr. Schindorff will touch on that, his report here with that, also touch on our diversity training that we had last week. I'm meeting with all of our principals, and as our goal is to become the premier school district in the state with our vision, just meeting, talking with each of our principals. So about a third of the way done, meeting with them individually, and that's been really good. A lot of great things have came out of that. Wanted to touch on with our boundary lines. On the next two nights, we have our Boundary Line Community Town Hall meeting tomorrow night. There's two in the next two days. Tomorrow night, 6:00 at Thomas Jefferson Middle School, and Wednesday night at 6:00 at Lewis and Clark. They will both be the same. We want to invite the entire community to at least attend one. If you're over ambitious and would like to attend two, more power to you. So we'll do that tomorrow night, so we want to invite folks to that. And basically, we're going to look at, through the Boundary Committee, three scenarios. These are all on our district website. You can see the three scenarios. They're not three finalized scenarios, but through the committee, of three recommendations to look at and poke holes in pros, cons, and that's what we're going to do tomorrow night. We're going to ask folks for their opinion. We're going to give groups, we're basically going to put them with their tables and show the three scenarios and ask them to discuss them at their table, and then we're going to ask each table to report out to the group.
The number you dialed is not in.
There we go. It's not, but they're here, we'll keep going. And so, basically from that, just asking for input, and we do believe we're stronger together, and not that we're all going to agree. We can agree to disagree, but we value input, we have empathy to try to look at it from someone else's perspective. So no final decision has been made. The final decision will be made here by the Board of Education, and we hope to have that in place here. I've mentioned August, being that the school will start in August of '19 as far as when it will go into effect. We want to have one year. As of right now, if I was a betting man, I would say September, which is one month behind. We'd rather be one month behind and do it right than to squeeze it into and trying to hurry with that. So we anticipate a first reading here at the July Board Meeting as an agenda item, which would give the public an opportunity to come address the board and say, this is why this is the greatest scenario in the world, or this is why this one stinks, and then they can give their opinion. We've had, I believe, 17 official meetings in the community.
Average, I have one.
Through the Boundary Committee, 18 unofficial meetings, our monthly coffee, we've talked about it, talked about on the radio, call-in, numerous face-to-face, phone calls, emails, et cetera. So the basically three scenarios, you can go to our district website at jcschools.us on the Boundary Committee to your left, that has the three scenarios that we'll be discussing tomorrow night. So just want to give an update on that. Do you guys have any questions on that? Here's the board with regards to that process or any part of that.
No, probably just a quick note to thanks for every person that served on that committee. I know this was not an easy task that we asked them to volunteer to do. It's something that we appreciate, and they do those jobs so other folks, the rest of us, don't have to, so certainly appreciate their service.
Absolutely, and we'll make sure and thank those folks accordingly. So that is all the update I have.
Very good. Chief of Learning Update from Dr. Schindorff.
Thank you. Talk to you a few, I'm starting to lose my voice. Give you an update on our diversity training. Last Wednesday, the 6th, we did have round two of our diversity training with Dr. Simmons, and as you know, we have three events scheduled with her, and so our next one will be on August the 3rd, but doing a lot of great work. We had a great group there. Again, it's not just school district, and we also had some board members there. We also have juvenile office and some police officers and different community groups that are participating in that training, and so it's been going well, and looking forward to August the 3rd. By way of summer school, we, I told you last time, that we were shooting for 3,500. We had that many that had registered. On the first week of summer school, we had 3,410 students show up, officially showed up, and so we're excited about that. That is 500 more than we had last year, so we're excited about the increase, and we believe some of those things are, not just the changes that we made in the elementary program, made it a little more enticing, but we have a lot more secondary students, and we're excited about that. And so, I believe at count, we had 565 middle schoolers that showed up and 672 high schoolers. So excited about those numbers, getting some more secondary students involved in the program. In terms of our ELA resource, I know I've been talking to you about this, we have started that process. We've spent the last couple of months with our curriculum team looking, talking with companies who offer resources, and what we did is we brought in a group of teachers, and they designed a rubric for us, and we use that rubric to determine if, when the companies talk to us, does their product provide what it is that the teachers are looking for? And so we use that rubric to score them. We have narrowed down our choices for the pilot, and so in early fall, we will begin a pilot with school-wide resource, will be a K-8 resource piloted, and Pearson will be English 1 and English 2. That'll be early fall, and then late fall, we'll use HMH, which is a K-12 product. So we have two companies right now that we have engaged them, and they're willing to work with us on a pilot, so we'll start that this fall. Excited about that process. But knowing that that is going to take us a year, rather than wait a year to get resources in the hands of teachers, we have, we did a little bit of work with some of our buildings that have been using our product. We currently use iReady for testing, and iReady offers what's called the toolkit, and it is a, basically it is a planning tool for designing lessons around your standards. And so, we have been able to secure that resource for our teachers for next year. So rather than waiting a year, they will have next year the iReady Toolbox, which will help them with planning rigorous instruction around our curriculum. So we're excited about that, so we don't have to wait a whole year. So any questions about that, about the Toolbox? Okay. By way of testing update with iReady, we have historically given iReady, excuse me, three times a year, beginning, middle, and end. We made the decision because reading is our priority, that we need to monitor it a little closer, so we will be using the iReady assessment quarterly, so four times next year, increasing by one time. And in order to help accommodate that, instead of just adding tests, what we're going to be communicating up to staff is, in addition to iReady four times, or three times in the past, teachers also did what are called end-of-unit assessments. So if you teach a unit, you typically have about five units on average. At the end of that unit, you give an assessment. We created those assessments. They have not been awesome assessments. They've been mediocre and have not been used well, and so rather than continue to use an assessment that we're not getting return on, we are going to allow teachers the opportunity to use those assessments, but not require those assessments like we have in the past. So we'll be reducing about five assessments and increasing the one iReady. So fewer assessments next year is what I'm saying. Okay? Okay, and then just a few technology updates, just so you know. The tech department has collected all of the 6th through 9 Chromebooks. They've collected those, inventoried those, tagged them, looking at those that need repairs because we'll use those again next year. They're in the process of getting the repairs done, and they'll get them back out to those students at the start of the year. As you know, the high school is going to, the iPads are coming out, and the Chromebooks, we're going to go one-to-one Chromebook next year for the start, so beginning next year, we will be 612 Chromebook one-to-one. So we did make the purchase of 1,900 Chromebooks that will put us in a 612 one-to-one Chromebook next year. Also, you may or may not know, Moro Heights, we did some rewiring over there. We had the, some old Cat 3 wiring, category 3 wiring that was outdated. We, tech department went in, pulled that out, and updated it to category 6, which is more modern, faster speed, and a little more reliable. So that process is done, it's been rewired, and it now has capacity for growth in the future. Along that line of fiber and networking, our current fiber contract that we have does not allow for expansions, and so knowing that we have Capital City, which is going to be an expansion, our current contract won't allow us to do that, so Joe is working with the company to do, he's working to do an RFP to change our contract to ensure that when Capital City comes online, we're going to be able to expand those services and make sure that we are ready to go. So when we have that RFP work done, complete, we'll bring it to you for approval, but just wanted you to know we're working on that process for Capital City. And then also along the lines of Capital City and our current Jeff City High School, construction is underway, as you know, and we've said all along that we're going to change the, what technology looks like in both sites. The smart boards are coming down, and we've been working with teachers and with companies on smart TVs that look very similar to what you have here on the wall here, and basically allow us to do a lot of, teachers to do a lot more interactive things wirelessly and around the classroom, and be mobile in the room to do things on the TV, and a lot of different methods of projecting. And so, we did run into some issues with that, and so we worked with a different, a couple of different companies to make sure we can get the product that's going to work for us and do what our teachers have asked to do. So we do have another device that's showing up this week at Dix Road that we believe is going to accomplish those things. Once we get it set up, we will bring teachers back in again, let them play with it, make sure that it does what they need it to do, and, but we believe we have found the right product, and so we're getting excited, getting much closer to finding the right product for our classrooms. And the company that we're working with has agreed to set aside the devices that we need to ensure that we have them. In current Jeff City High School, we pulled out the smart boards for the construction, so they've assured us that they have the devices that we'll need if we go with this device to get into Jeff City High School for August, so we believe we're ready to go with those.
Ryan, just one question. Will the Chromebooks be handled the same way that we did the iPads as far as the ability for the student to pay a deposit or whatever and to take them home, or if they, or the insurance, if they want to take them home every day, or how does that work?
We certainly, they'll certainly have the option for insurance, but I think, are you asking me whether or not they can purchase the device when they graduate, or no, just if they can take them home?
Just if they'll be able to take them home like they did. I know the, I mean, it's my understanding that previously with the iPad, if they paid the insurance, they were able to take them home, there were some kids that maybe couldn't, and they, those had to stay at school.
Yeah, and I can't tell you that we have a final decision on whether it is the same process of if you have insurance, you can, and if you don't, you can't. I'm not ready to say that that is our final decision. What we believe is that the device itself is a resource for kids, is for kids to be able to use that resource 24/7 is a goal of ours, but we need to also make sure that we can do it, we can do it safely to make sure that they can access information outside of the school setting, and that we can manage those devices when they do get damaged, so we're working on that.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Next item of business, we have Mr. Bob Weber, pinch hitting for Jason Hoffman for our CFO/COO update. Bob, are you going to talk to us about summer school?
All right.
Unless you want to talk about summer school.
Actually, I'm pitch hitting for Jason, I want to talk to you about the budget.
Give us an update on the summer projects.
Facility summer projects, actually in your pocket, I kind of put a recap. I know over the last several months, I'll bring in a contract here and there and ask for approval, but real quick, we're going to be partial re-roofing at Simison Miller Center, East and Thorpe Gordon. The asbestos removal that's occurring at the high school is a contract that we administer and we supervise in cooperation with scheduling with NABHOES, but it's one of our, it's one of our contracts. We put a new intercom in at Cedar Hill. It's actually finished. We're doing tuck pointing and caulking and cleaning and sealing the brick at Lewis and Clark. We're making driveway improvements, widening at both Lawson and Thomas Jefferson, widening the drive for parent pickup at South, Lewis and Clark. We're putting in two new hot water heaters, large commercial heaters. Cedar Hill had some residential doors, and it used to be an open pod, and then they came in and divided it up, but they used residential-type doors. We're putting in some solid-core doors and putting in some new carpeting, or I'm sorry, removing some carpeting and putting in new tile at Callaway Hill. Lawson, we're putting in a divider wall in the physical therapy area to add some additional classroom space. Do a lot of small miscellaneous projects we're bringing in. Our staff is responsible for the bidding and procurement of the trailers at the high schools. We're bringing in six mobile classrooms. One is in place, the rest should be arriving this week. We're in discussions with the city of Oak Summit about the possibility of hooking on to the sewer system in Oak Summit. For Callaway Hills, presently it's, we have a lagoon there, and DNR regulates that, and we think long-term, we need to get off of a lagoon and get hooked into a sewer system. That could be a pretty sizable project. Matter of fact, we're meeting again with the new city administrator this week to see where we're at there. In the summer, we do a lot of preventive maintenance, cleaning of equipment, the coils and filters and belts and so forth. We repaint the curbs and parking lot stripes and things around the school, landscape, or mulching landscaping, those types of things. Our custodians do deep cleaning, of course, re-wax all of the floors and so forth. Most of that occurs in July because of summer school, as far as the waxing is concerned. Also, the summer is a busy time for all of our inspections. All of our elevators and escalators are inspected, our, we inspect our bleachers and basketball goals and playgrounds, all that equipment. We have the fire extinguishers, the hood systems, the fire alarms, security systems, all of that are inspected. Asbestos, we have to do every six-month surveillance of what we have in our facilities, in all the facilities, and it's done every six months. We normally do it one time in the summer and one time at Christmas. The fire department comes in twice a year, they usually one time summer, the next time's around Christmas, and do a detailed fire inspection. So between the capital projects and the inspections, and then our staff goes through quite a bit of training also in the summer, required, some's required state training that they, that we have to do. So it's real quick, in a nutshell, any questions? Summers, summers are usually pretty busy for our department, and of course, we're involved with Capital City High School and Jeff City High School with coordination with NABHOES on those projects as well.
I might just say kudos to Bob and his guys and all of our mainstent custodial folks as we, we're trying to raise the bar in everything we do, reading, learning, but also in our buildings. We don't expect our buildings to look like the Ritz Carlton, but we don't want them to look like a Motel 6 either, so if it's, I use Durian, or that's no endorsement for Durian, by the way. I'm just, you know, raising the bar as we go, and so like, kudos and thanks to Bob and his guys for what they do, so.
We don't try to leave the light on for you either.
Last item of business under Reports and Communications, Dr. D., Mr. Allo was good enough to spend some of his weekend time here recently at a MSBA leadership forum, and so I asked if he would be willing to share with us his thoughts and what his experience was.
Yeah, I'm recalling that Mrs. Schwartz nominated me to be the delegate for the MSBA, and so I tried to take that responsibility. I did attend the opening, or I mean, a delegate assembly for MSBA, and it was quite informative, actually. So there was an opening session, which they had the chief equity officer from the National Association of School Boards, and so it was interesting to hear her. She was a dynamic speaker, and then they had breakout sessions, and probably the most informative was the legislative update. So there was an opportunity to hear from MSBA representatives about their work at the Capitol and about the legislation that was both introduced, and now, there were a lot of bills that were introduced that didn't get through both houses this past year, and we're glad about some of those. The one that probably has the most impact was a House bill and Senate bill regarding virtual courses that were, are being required to be offered, and so I see Don shaking her head that that will have some impact, and so we're still waiting to see how that shakes out, but there is some requirement of legislation that could impact us in terms of making virtual courses available to our students. There, at the delegate assembly, we actually, there was an election of officers for MSBA, for president and president-elect, and then recognition of some board members and boards that achieve certifications. Probably, I told somebody, I think the most significant message that I came away with, the most significant impression I had was the fact that we as board members have an opportunity to be heard and to make our voice heard in the legislative process, and the importance of that in terms of, you know, our voice being heard. The state Capitol, when there is legislation that is introduced that we see as being positive or negative for us and our district, we need to ensure that we, you know, work to have our voice heard. We were reminded that we are elected officials, that we represent a huge constituency across the state collectively, and so that it's important, in fact, when there is legislation that we, you know, make sure we let our voices, you know, be heard. And finally, the update on surrounding, on issues surrounding the State Board of Education. Currently, as you may have heard in the news, there are only three appointed members of the State Board of Education for a board that has eight members, and so they have not had a quorum and have been able to conduct any business since December. Governor Parsons has said that he was going to make it a priority to get that done, to get those vacancies appointed, and even recently, his last Friday, I think, in the news, he was talking about that he may make a couple of appointments this week in trying to get a quorum so that they can begin to function. There are some things that the board, state board needs to do legislatively. They have some mandates that they're supposed to conduct some business, and so there are things that have been piling up that they haven't been able to do, and so that's probably, you know, the biggest thing in terms of the new administration in getting those board appointments made so they can conduct business.
Any questions for Karen? Appreciate you taking the time to attend.
Yeah, it was informative and interesting, and it was, you know, again, interesting to see, I think, the significance of what we can do as board members.
Thank you.
Future dates, won't go through all of those for you all, but just to bring your attention to the top three. Larry, as already mentioned, the community meetings tomorrow night and Wednesday, and regardless of the Boundary Meetings, you see those listed on there, and then we have a budget approval meeting scheduled for later this month, so make sure you have that on your calendar if you don't, please. And already looking like we've got dates for the beginning of the school year, starting to fill in. On the new business, we want to talk to Item A, we reschedule, we're rescheduling the September Board of Education meeting.
Yes, absolutely. We have our, the second Monday of each month is when our board meets, and that is our community partnerships, as we talk about being stronger together, is Helioc's golf tournament on that day and afternoon, and so evening, and so I've been a part of that. So we've rescheduled the last few years so I can partner with them, and I believe that date, if we did the same date last year on the Tuesday, which would be September 11th, Tuesday instead of Monday, the 10th, it would be Tuesday, September 11th, or another option is two weeks after the 11th, the 4th Monday, which would be the 24th. So whatever you see that you'd like to do, whether we keep it the same as last year, that's at the direction of the board.
I appreciate that. I think it's a, that's a valuable opportunity for you to participate in. I know you've done it in the past and have shared with passports, and that's been worthwhile. know you've done it in the past and have shared with passports and that's been worthwhile, certainly from a partnership standpoint. So that would be my suggestion. You all want to look at your calendars in terms of what your availability is either on the 11th or the 24th?
11th works for me.
Me too.
Fine.
Perfect.
Do we need a motion to approve that change?
Well, let's do it just for fun. I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Very good. September meetings rescheduled to September 11th. Next item of business is MSBA board policy and some policies that the policy committee is bringing for your review and recommendation. Mr. Anlo, you want to speak to those?
So the policy committee met and we reviewed a number of things that had, some that were, you know, waiting action, some MSBA policies that had been handed down. There's a list and the minutes were included right, so you all see who was in attendance at that meeting. Basically, there are a few things that we just wanted to give you. As far as old business, there were some questions and the policy committee previously had discussed some questions and issues around drug testing and the policies for that. Dr. Schindor had been asked to do some research and to find out a few things because of concerns that some people had about maybe a student being suspected of being under the influence, but then having a huge gap of time where they would be able to get the documentation of the proof. And so Dr. Schindor found that there was not a significant, there were very small number of, only three incidents, I think you said, where there was an issue with that. And so we found that in response to that concern, it was in fact not a major issue. So we discussed that though. We did continue and determine that there was some additional research that was needed, that we wanted to look further into the companies that are providing drug testing services for our activities and to see about services that they might be able to, we might be able to use for expanded beyond activities. And so we're going to, again, look into the possibility of utilizing some of those services. So some discussions around those policies, JCFI and JFCI and JFCI AP. So no action at this time on those. We did take action and we're bringing forward some recommendations and going to entertain motions to approve some MSBA recommendations. We also have done some research and talked with our counterparts and determined that for some of these policies, it seems to be standard practice to waive a second reading because they're standard policies that come down. We really don't have any, I mean, we either do them or we don't get funding, right? So there are a few of these that we're going to recommend that we entertain, like say a motion to approve and to waive the second reading. So the first of those would be IGBD, which was that relates to at-risk students. And I would entertain a motion to approve that and to dismiss with a second reading.
Do I hear a second?
Salute.
Thank you, Lindsey. Any discussion, questions on that?
So does our, do our policies say we have to have a second reading? I mean, are we going against our policies by waiving the second reading?
No, I don't believe, I don't think so.
No, you can do it by motion. Yeah, we've done it in the past.
I recall that, but that was my question. Was what do our policies say about? If the policies say it's okay, then it's a question.
All right.
Any other comments, questions? Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Very good.
The second one would be regarding graduation requirements. Again, an MSBA recommendation, policy IKF and same, I would entertain same recommendation there regarding adoption with the waiving of the second reading.
Thank you, Ken.
Second.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Lori.
It's okay.
Boy, I can't.
It's okay.
It's a one that.
Lindsey, Lori, Lori.
Lindsey.
It's two years.
The iteration is all messed up. Okay. Any additional comments, questions on that one? Any here, none in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
And the third policy, JHD regarding student guidance and counseling. Again, an MSBA recommendation that we recommend approving and waiving the second reading.
Salute.
Thank you, Lindsey.
Second.
Thank you, Lori. Additional comments, questions? Any here, none in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Finally, JHDF, which is related, relates to suicide awareness and prevention. And again, same, same approach.
Salute.
Thank you, Lindsey.
Second.
Hey, you're a second, Lori.
Yes.
Thank you. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
A couple of policies that we're not recommending any action at this point, or one that we're not recommending any action at this point, and that's relationship to the comprehensive school improvement plan. And Dr. Lithicum is going to continue to review and make, bring forward recommendations, suggestions at our next policy meeting. So no call for action at this point.
Is that DFJ?
That is DF, no, excuse me, that's AD, the comprehensive, yeah, that's.
Okay, did we skip DFJ?
Yeah, we haven't talked about DFJ.
DFJ is next, yeah. Yeah. DFJ is the last one. And it relates to a recommendation that was made by Denise Pierce in regards to our accounting practices to make them align with federal standards. And in fact, we'll make it a little bit easier as we understand as they explain the policies and the way that expenses are reported and so forth by our faculty and staff. And so we are entertaining a motion to approve this, but we are not, we are suggesting that today be our first reading and that we will do a second reading at our special called budget meeting on the 25th. So this would be a first reading of that and second reading would be later and then we can still adopt that. It's still, it goes into effect, this needs to be in effect by July 1 and that will allow us to meet that requirement.
It's got to be in effect by July 1?
Yes.
So we'll vote on it on our June 25th board meeting?
Yes, that's our plan. Yes. So we entertain a motion to approve it with a second reading for that date.
I don't think we have to do that, do we?
Do we?
If we're having a second reading, we don't.
If we're, if we don't take any action at this point, then if we're going to do a second reading on June?
Boy, that's correct. Am I correct on that?
I think that's right.
Okay.
I can question.
Okay, no action.
Just accept the first reading.
Okay. And then there are the final ones that you see listed there really require no, well, they're, I don't see them, they're not on the, they're not on the agenda, but there were some others regarding professional staff compensation, regarding discipline of students with disabilities, administrative procedures with students with disabilities and receiving, and those students receiving accommodation under section 504 by not having special education services. All of those are requiring no action because our policies, our board policies are ready, are in line with the policy the way it's recommended. So no action is necessary because everything is consistent with what is being recommended.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate your work on this.
Yeah, I will miss him. One final thing in this, you'll see a note in there about boundary lines. And we are, we discussed and we do believe that we need a policy regarding boundary lines. We entertained that discussion, didn't make any action, but there was consensus that we should adopt a policy. So it is our intent to, at the next meeting, to have further discussion and to formally come back to the board at some point with a policy that would give us some guidance on future guidelines on how we would approach boundary line discussions, not waiting until a major construction project to drive that. Having some probably time, either timeframe and/or combination of timeframe and other, you know, demographic changes or things that might drive that change or review. But we do believe it's important to have a policy in place that would help us not be caught 10 years down the road and say, well, we haven't looked at boundary lines since we built Capitol City High School.
Basically, I just interject of a visiting boundary lines on a more regular basis. As a general here, we've just not gone there. So just have a more consistent regular basis and then the also, if the demographics change dramatically, of some guidelines to.
We look forward to more information on that from the administration. Next item of business, approved transportation routes for the upcoming year. Mr. Underwood.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. All right. I just got a four-slide presentation, so a real short one. First slide, you go to the next one there.
Yeah, where you want to be?
No, yeah, this is fine. This is fine. That's our school district, broke out into the elementaries and right now 223 square miles of school districts is what we service. The next slide that you'll see is what you guys are approving here this evening is our routes. And that's kind of what it looks like all jumbled up on there. There's a total of, I think, I believe there's 64 routes on there and that's what it looks like when you look at it, different colors. You zoom in and they start spreading apart, but pretty much mirrors the map that you saw before. You go to the next one there, if you would. 64 routes, 35 buses that run two-tier routes. They'll run one school, then they head back out and run a second tier. Jason did want me to mention that right now, currently, we spend about $41,776 for a single-tier route annually for one bus. Okay? And that's about $240 a day. And then the second tier is $4,400 annually. So we get a pretty significant price break. It's only $25.33 for that second tier. So if we did run all single-tier buses for all of our schools, we'd be running right at about 100 routes and it'd be about $1.3 million more dollars in transportation to run all single-tier routes if we had a bell schedule all the same. But currently with the two-tier routes, we're saving ourselves on 1.3 million. Six compass room or transition room routes, 11 early childhood routes, three transfer buses, whether that be EER, Nichols, Samaritan Center transfers and early releases. We utilize three buses for all of those different programs that we have. The early releases, there's students that get early released throughout the day and so they'll do a transfer and then they'll go do an early release and then transfer. So we keep pretty much those three buses running all day from bell to bell. And then currently transporting about 5,467 students twice a day. That in percentage is about 58% of our population that's enrolled is transported on a school bus. Average ridership on school buses right now is about 55 students per bus. We run two different sized buses, 72 passenger and 89 passenger buses. The flat nose that you see out there, those are 89. So the ones that look like a traditional school bus, those will be 72 passenger buses. And then, that's, let's see, 818,000 miles scheduled. That's what you're looking at in your packets. We will do 1 million plus by the end of year and that includes student activity trips and then the transfers and what have you. But a lot of the transfers at Samaritan Center are scheduled, but early releases vary. I mean, we can go from here all the way up to Oak Summit for one student and back. And so that's one of the things that drive that difference in scheduled miles versus end of year. Now scheduled, we don't have activity trips scheduled either, so that also drives that 1 million plus miles by the end of year. And then the next slide is just, anybody have any questions regarding what you're looking at? Okay, I guess I would just ask for approval for these rounds.
Thank you, Rich. Any additional comments, any questions? Good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Frank.
Next item of business, consider the, consider approving non-core curriculum. Dr. Schindor.
Okay, in front of you, you have about 21 different non-core curriculum. So would you prefer that we do this as a group or to do them individually?
Group.
I think there's a clear preference.
So just by, by method of, so all of these, all of these non-core follow the same process that our core curriculum do and that is that they follow the regular curriculum design. These were, all this work was completed by our classroom teachers. They came together over the past year, organized these curriculum by the updated standards. And so a lot of work was put into them and it's good work and so we're excited about it. So I'd ask that you approve the non-core curriculum.
Two, three. Thank you, Lori.
Second.
Thank you, Rich. Any additional comments, any questions for Dr. Schindor about this?
Thank you for your work on this.
Really?
It's a big lift.
Killed a lot of trees.
A lot of work.
No, it's, it's a ton of work and it's so core. It's foundational to what the district is here to do. So good. Thank you. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
You're going to take it from back home with you?
All of them at once?
Can you jury all at once?
We may throw them.
Right. And if you would, please, Dr. Schindor Superintendent, would you please pass on the board's appreciation for all of the work that the staff put in there?
Absolutely.
It's a big project.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that. All right. Last item of business and your open agenda is a GMP Amendment Four with NABHOT. Mr. Weber.
All right. Starting on page 85 is the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment Number Four. And this would be for Area G, which is the new Jefferson City High School. It would actually be the bank of classrooms on the east side of the building. That's Area G. The, would be $6,971,531 for Amendment Four. And to date, that brings a total to date to $26,478,580.96. This package is the only one that has been bid for Jefferson City High School at this point. The rest of the amendments have been, guaranteed price amendments have been for Capitol City. But there is a big package coming out for too long for, that would be all of the rest of Jefferson City High School. And this, next week are the remaining packages for Capitol City. Is that correct, Dale? Do you have Dale with NABHOT here with us if anybody has questions? So anyway, we'll need approval for this amendment, Guaranteed Price Amendment Four. Any questions?
I'm looking to approve.
Thank you, Rich.
Second.
Thank you, Ken. Questions, comments? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, it's approved.
Thank you, Bob.
Appreciate it. So we've asked Lori to do this on a number of occasions. Lori, you want to do the honors this evening?
No, I can't take it.
Yeah.
Motion to suspend open to enter into closed meeting by roll call vote pursuant to chapter 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri, section nine, preparation, preparation, including any discussions or work product on behalf of public government, that's a new one, or its representatives for negotiations and 14 records which are protected from disclosure by law.
We're trying to stop.
We've done it too many times.
Yeah.
I wasn't prepared for that.
You did well. Thank you, Rich. Roll call vote, please.
Yes, Lindsey, Lori.
Yes.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Yes.
Ken, Scott, thank you.
So we'll adjourn for about 10 minutes and be back in here. Thanks, everybody, for attending.